Test, test. Testing one, two, testing one, two. It's on. It's up very good. Testing two. Testing, 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 testing. Test. Test, test. Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three. Test. Test, test. Test, test.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here's Dorine. Oh, that's good. I don't know that we should. Don't you worry. You want me to take that shirt?
No, she's not gonna take it.
Hey, your name is all off the black code, so don't pull it off us yet. Give me until the end of the year. Somebody actually did try and take it off.
Does what?
A lot of things been happening.
Not tonight, Monday.
How do you know?
I'd like to call to order the Skidnaik County City Council Committee meeting for Monday, June 16, 2025. I know we have a very full room here and maybe some of you have never been here for our process before, so I'd like you to know that there is no comment from the public tonight. And if you have to need to feel like you need to have conversations, we actually take them in the hallway because the room is so crowded that people want to be able to hear what would be said around the table. But we do have time before we get to that piece of the agenda, so we're going to begin with a presentation of our annual audit, and I ask Mr. Gukumak to please come forward.
Good evening, Council. It looks like we have a full house today. Everybody wants to hear about the 2024 city audit.
Yeah.
I have John Talfaskey here from Kuzak and CPA, so he'll review all the key points. John, want to take the permit?
Okay, thank you all for having me here tonight. I want to start off by saying thank you to the mayor and city council for having me here tonight, and also to your entire team that helps us out during the audit. We really appreciate everything they do. Special thanks to Liz Nelson as our main point of contact during the audit, as well with his team. They do a great job during the audit, and we'll thank them for everything they do. So our ultimate responsibility during the audit is to issue an opinion on your financial statements as to whether they're materially stated and whether they're compliant with generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP. So our audit takes place in three main phases. So our first main phase is pre-audit phase, which takes place in December. What we're doing during this phase, we're reviewing your internal control processes, testing those internal control processes, performing variance and budget analysis, we review the city council meetings, and we complete our internal risk assessment. The next major phase of our audit takes place in mid-March. We use the information we gather during the pre-audit phase, and we develop our audit programs to test account balances to verify they're materially stated. The third phase of our audit is the recording phase, where we review the financial statements prepared by your senior accountant, and we report on the final results. So the draft financial statements that you have in front of you are a 78-page document overall. They're comprised of several major parts. So the first major part is going to be the management's discussion and analysis. This is a required, un-audited section of your financial statements, which highlight the summary, I'm sorry, highlight the summary of operating results and other financial highlights. If you're unfamiliar with the financial statements, it's a good read overall. Pages eight through 10, this is your independent auditors report, which shows our opinion on the financial statements. It is important to note that your financial statements are on the fund and account group level only, exclusive of the non-current governmental asset account group. We are pleased to say that we have once again the ability to issue a fully modified opinion on our financial statements, so this is the highest level of assurance that we can give you. It's considered a clean report and we had no reportable issues or compliance ceremony. Pages 11 through 13, these are your governmental fund balance sheets and statements of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance. Sorry. Okay, sorry. So your approximated operating results for the year ended December 31st, 2024. General fund, fund balance was unchanged due to ARPA loss revenue. Water fund had a deficit of 759,000. Store fund had a surplus of 3.7 million. Recreation fund, surplus of 168,000. Special grants and revenue had a surplus of 17,000. Capital projects had a deficit of 10 million due to expenditures of the capital projects funded with bond proceeds. So highlights of your 2024 general fund activity and your approximated figures. Prior year tax collections exceeded expectations by 952,000. Casino revenue exceeded expectations by 287,000. Property sales fell below expectations by 2.3 million. Sales tax revenue exceeded your expectations by 1.8 billion. Insurance recoveries exceeded expectations by 1.5 million. Adult-use cannabis revenues were a total of $683,000. Those exceeded expectations by 333,000. City also received $1.2 million in unbudgeted AIM funds during the year. On federal ARPA funds that were utilized during the year were $18.5 million, 4.6 million of which were utilized to give the general fund the ARPA offset of loss revenue. So overall, we feel that management does a good job with their reserves. Fund balance in the general fund is $18.9 million with $6.6 million restricted funds at the end of the year. So details of the restricted and assigned fund balance can be found on page 53 of your financial statements. Bandbarings during the year increased by $10 million upon capital projects. There was an overall decrease of $9.9 million in the city's net pension liability for underfunded ERS and PFRS. Balance at the end of the year was a liability of $7.1 million for ERS and a liability of $35.7 million for PFRS. Uh, during 2024, the city also elected additional benefits under Section 384E of the New York State Retirement Law, which is allowing them to amortize the past service costs for the next 10 years. This was an increase to your net long-term debt of $7.1 million. Total OPEB liability is decreased by $51 million to $243 million. These, uh, GASP statements 68 and 75 require that these items, the net pension liability and also the OPEB liability are recorded on your financial statements. These are, for lack of a better term, considered paid liabilities. Are required to be, they are, um, required to be recorded on your financial statements, but they don't affect any of the, um, current year operating results. Page 14, this is your custodial fund as required by GASP statement 84. The footnotes to the financial statements can be found on pages 16 through 59. Uh, what these do is they detail the significant accounting policies of the city and also your material account balances on base of financial statements. Pages 60 through 66, these are required supplemental financial information. Includes the budget, actual reports, ERS and PFRS, pension assets or liabilities, and also OPEB details in the later auditions. Pages 67 through 78, this is your federal single audit. Since the city expended more than $750,000 in federal funding, you are required to have what's called a federal single audit. We are required to rotate major high-risk programs every few years. Uh, this year we selected the lead hazard mitigation grant, part of transportation grants, and also the ARPA funding. We've noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies within these, uh, grants. Uh, we feel the city has good internal controls over your federal grant recording and compliance as well. Uh, the remaining ARPA funds that the city has are required to be expended by December 31st, 2024 or obligated and dispersed by December 31st, 2026. City has obligated these funds as of December 31st, 2024. So from an overall accounting and control standpoint, we feel the city's doing a great job overall. Some great people on your team. Uh, controls are well, operating as designed. Uh, we also do issue what's called a post-government letter at the end of the audit to require communication at the end of the audit if there was any issues or concerns during the audit. We did have one comment in that letter, um, which regarding old MVP receivables and the collection process of those. There was a recommendation made for that, which was a repeating comment from previous years as well. And the only remaining item that we have here in audit is to complete a form SFSAC with the Federal Census Bureau. Um, this is a required form that has to be submitted to them, uploading all the information for the federal single audit. Uh, that will be done after the audit is formally accepted and we can, uh, complete that process. So, as I said, the audit will be very well overall. Very pleased with the results, so I'd be happy to take any questions on the audit process or the financials as well.
So we often hear during budget season, uh, discussions around how much should we tap into the general fund balance? Looking at page two, where you're talking about the measures of strength, you need to expand on that. I've been on council for four years, so just understanding more of what goes into those three.
Yeah, what's the specific section that you have to address?
Uh, so is the general fund continued?
Yeah, so that would be in the management's discussion and analysis. So what they're doing is highlighting the specific strengths of the cities and the overall fund balance, the ability or, you know, the need to use the fund balance or the need not to. So what we're seeing is the city does not have to dip into their fund balance if they're beginning to fund operations. So you're finding external sources, whether that be property tax revenue, sewer charges. The specific funds and the individual funds are self-sustaining within themselves. So they're being, they're able to generate, you know, enough money to cover operations overall.
Now, I just have a follow-up question. Is there a percentage that delineates like that excellent rating that you said before, a standard threshold that's preferred for this optimal rating?
I don't think so. I think it's an overall, just the general feel from your budgeting standpoint. So how much money do we, do we foresee future projects to use completely? As there's something coming up down the pipeline, significant capital projects, significant improvements, what's going on within the city that we need to plan for? And I think the city does a really great job in identifying those sub items and putting them on the side.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question. Regarding the economic factors, since this is a city report, um, I noticed that we're also talking about the county being the fourth growing, the fourth fastest growing. So do you have any, um, data on how fast the city is growing within, say, you know, you mentioned the county?
Um, we don't have any data in there. So the management's discussion analysis, it's not an audited section, it's a required part of your financial statements, um, but it's not an audited part of your financial statement. So while we do perform limited procedures over that, we're not essentially verifying the accuracy of those really headline. So ultimately, that's something that your team has put together and said, you know, here's some of the highlights that we have overall. So you could definitely expand on that if you wanted to, if you wanted to add some additional information or, you know, that's really your section, that's management's opening section to say, you know, here's all the highlights, the significant things that happened to us, here's the good, bad, and what we foresee in the future as well.
And I also bet the part where it said about the, um, we don't, we don't, we're not in charge of the highlights and, you know, create, um, you know, we don't decide anything. But does the audit take a look at how the pilot impacts our overall budget?
Um, we don't from the audit standpoint. So it's more of dealing with material. So we're dealing with material issues. So is it a material item? Is it something that is given as the pilot paid? Is that receivable? We have to verify the accuracy of that amount that's outstanding. So we're looking to verify the accuracy of the assets, the liabilities, and any of the equity that goes as well. So ultimately, we're not looking at those specific contracts for the pilots, but we are looking to see that the amounts which you're saying are paid, you know, for not paid, why they're paying. And so we're kind of going through that process as well.
I have a question on the, uh, the water, uh, the sewer and the recreational fund. The, uh, the increase in the fund balance for the water, 8.5%. The sewer, 30.55%. And the recreational fund, 12.4%. Can you expand on that a little as to why it's, it's good that it increased, but then why, for those, why extended it all those numbers?
Well, I think there was, there was a few different scenarios that happened during the year. Um, so specifically in the sewer fund, um, there was an overall, you know, a significant surplus within the sewer fund. But that was primarily based on a few one-time items. So these were past charges, uh, rate changes, other adjustments that happened during the year. There was also increases in rates in the sewer rates, as you know, so that helped to fuel that as well. But ultimately, I think it was, you know, we're taking that money, putting it aside within the reserves, within those funds. So if there's projects down the road that are, um, you know, we know are going to happen, the city's setting aside that money to make sure that those projects can be ultimately funded without using current resources. So we're setting the money aside currently for future projects as well. But to answer your question, why those percentages are going up, primarily because of, uh, the surplus is a good overall management of the expenditures, money coming in and money going out.
Any other questions?
So, so the final item will be, once you approve the financial statements, I'll send the management representation letter over there. Have that signed and then we'll finalize the statements and we'll have the final report.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for having me.
Are we moving to adapt? I need a motion to adapt the budget or adapt the audit.
I'll let you take your bit, Mr. Finnet.
So, yeah. So, um, we'll move a motion to adapt the, uh, the 2024 audit statement. Second, all in favor? Aye, thank you.
Um, I'd like to open Health and Recreation. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is a discussion of, um, some really exciting, uh, new programs that are going to happen, uh, four programs that are going to happen this summer. Um, and I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Masekwa and our guest Heather Senical to come up and, and tell us a little bit more about that program.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, President Council. We came here tonight with Heather Senical from the United Way. Uh, Heather posed me back in March about some programs that she would like to bring into the park in conjunction with our summer programs. So we met about two or three times about it and we discussed. They have a really great program lined up for us this summer. They're going to come to all the parks. And I don't want to steal Heather's thunder because she worked really hard at this, but.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Congressman Patrick, for inviting me to share this information out with everyone tonight. Um, so we, uh, I'm, I'm coming to you with, uh, from the United Way, the Grand Capital Region, but also a member of the Summer Meals Collaborative across eight counties. And Schenectady is a really special county for us here in the collaborative. Um, so as Bill mentioned, we approached, um, him earlier this, this year to talk about like, how can we collaborate specifically around summer nutrition programs for kids? Um, several of our partners run some meals programs and several of our partners also run activities for kids during the summer. So how can we maximize these great resources for kids and families and work together? Um, and so Bill was sharing about, um, all of the great, uh, activities going on in parks. And so we saw it as a natural kind of connection point. So this summer, we will be, um, offering summer meal block parties, uh, four times throughout the summer at our, our four signature parks here in, in Schenectady. So, um, they will be on Tuesdays, so every other Tuesday this month. And I brought the schedule here with me to share out, um, with you all tonight. Uh, and we'll be alternating between, um, lunchtimes and, um, evening hours so that we can kind of try to see what works best for families, uh, throughout the summer. Um, so these, uh, block parties will feature the summer meals, um, sites and all of our summer meals partners will be there. There will be fun activities for kids and families. Um, there will be food for the entire family. Uh, there'll be a lot of community partners. We have 15 community partners assembled, uh, in these, in these block parties that will be sharing out resources and programs for kids and families throughout the summer. Um, and so we're really excited to be able to offer this this summer and it's all free. Um, you don't have to sign up. You just show up and enjoy the, the evening or the afternoon with us. Um, and we really hope that you can help us get the word out so that we can have as many families participate as possible this summer. Again, we're trying to maximize, um, great resources for kids and families, uh, that are happening in our community and highlight the wonderful, um, programs happening in the park too. So it's a natural, uh, connection point and we're really excited as a partner.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? And I know Heather brought some, um, flyers for all of us as well that she can, she can handle. If anybody have any questions or, oh, sorry, I'm like looking around.
Well, this with, um, with, uh, the meal sign meals, the children lunches through Sycamore.
Yes. Um, so Sycamore Collaborative is running the summer meals program. Um, the school district is running the farm-to-family meals program. And they are also, um, going to be at the same summer meal sites as well. So there'll be multiple ways to feed kids, to feed their whole family, to feed any community member that, that comes to, to these programs.
Yes, Sycamore is providing the, the meals.
Yep. And the school district is providing the lunches for, they're, they're basically making the lunches for Sycamore.
For Sycamore, that's right, yes.
Will the, will there be any, um, any things for, uh, residents to take home? Any canned goods, any fresh fruit, vegetables, or something like that be there as well?
Yes, so the farm-to-family meals program is basically operating like a, uh, a, a green market, right? Um, and so they'll be at several sites throughout the city this summer. And I did not bring their schedule because they're just finalizing it, but it will be available soon. And so basically just show up and, um, that you can basically fill a bag full of fresh produce, milk, eggs, proteins, um, and it will change throughout the summer. So as new vegetables are, um, be harvested, they'll be on the truck. Um, and then, you know, basically it's a, it's a four-choice. So if there's something that you don't like, you don't have to take it. If there's something that you like a little bit more than something else, you can take a little bit more of that as well.
And who are your partners?
Who are our partners? Um, so the city is a partner, um, the, the county is definitely a partner, the school district, Sycamore Collaborative, Create Community Studios, um, you are Folklore. We're really excited this summer that Pan-African Orchestra is joining us at the block parties. We got the invitation to kids to join and, and participate. Um, the Children's Museum of Saratoga is a partner, um, the Green Market's a partner, Cornell Cooperative Extension, Food Pantries, Capital Region Vegan Network, the Schenectady County Food Council, Skokie River Center, lots of partners. And there's always room for more. So if there are other organizations that want to get involved, we'd love to have them come and join us.
So it's, it's somewhat of a resource fair as well as, um, the meal, the meal program. Ms. Porter, if you could.
So you mentioned a little bit about the block parks. Can you expand on that in terms of what's going to happen up? I heard about the entertainment, but I know that in the past, the summer, excuse me, the school district has had a summer enrichment program.
Yes.
So that's educational and is this including any of that or is that not something that's going to happen this year?
Um, so for the enrichment program, I know that some of the kids will be coming to the park.
It'll, it'll be during certain days, the school district will bring us kids to various parks where we're going to be staffing with the youth program. Um, we haven't really finalized that yet, but we're just ready for schools to get done with and finalize what they're going to do, bringing the kids to us. That'll be Hillhurst, Central Park, Jerry Borrell, and Steiners.
And then for the activities during the block parties, a lot of our partners are bringing STEM-based activities. So for example, uh, Create Community Studios will be doing a lot of art-based activities. The Children's Museum has a lot of fun and nature-based activities, as does the Skokie River Center. So they're all, um, a lot of the activities are hands-on and it's a way to engage the whole family, the whole community. Um, it is, and then, um, there'll be fun things for kids to take away as well, um, in addition to, to the meals that will be provided.
Thank you. Mr. Fröll?
So I just want to highlight the fact that, um, the fresh produce truck from the school district, though that is Schenectady City School District kind of led initiative, they're always looking for people to just kind of jump on the truck and help distribute some of their fresh produce. You know, so if anyone's interested in that, please reach out, can we chat to the superintendent? We're at Schenectady City School District, this is where they do the program.
Uh, did that include, I know we spoke about the donor, the free food for families.
Yes, yeah. So one of our, um, community partners came forward and they had said that they would really like to sponsor the meals for adults. Um, because of, of what, one of the limitations of the summer meals program is it's only for, um, youth 18 and younger. Um, and so, uh, we wanted to make sure at the block parties, at the very least, we could, uh, feed everyone who shows up. And so we have a donor, um, it is the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. They are sponsoring meals for anyone that comes to the block parties. And so we'll have special meals for the block parties and you can think like cookouts, things like that. Uh, the school district will be making those meals for, for us. Um, and we'll be able to serve anyone who comes. And so we're really excited this, this year to be able to offer that. And we're really thankful to Good Shepherd Lutheran Church for their generous, um, donation to be able to do that.
Would you just mention the kickoff?
Absolutely. So to kick off this summer, um, a, a Sycamore Collaborative is organizing on June 30th from 12 to 3 at Jerry Borrell Park, um, a kickoff celebration. It's kind of the start of summers, start of summer meals, and the start of all these great programs happening around the city. Uh, so we'll be at Jerry Borrell Park. Um, there'll be a ceremony of sorts around 12:30. Um, and then it'll just be a, you know, a run, really fun time with the community. Uh, so again, we hope you can join us for that too. Um, there'll be all of these partners that I talked about earlier assembled. Um, and, and we're really excited to, to start another summer, uh, with kids and families in, in the community.
Anything else from, any comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much. And if you want to, you can hand those over.
much. And if you want to, you can hand those out.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Is there anything else to come before Health and Recreation? And if not, look for a motion to adjourn from Health and Recreation. Okay, so move second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Sorry.
I like to call to order government operations. We have one item on the agenda today, and that is a discussion around Schenectady opting into the good cause eviction. So as council members know, we have had, we've been visited by people at the rail in our last council meetings, talking about the importance of housing and housing stabilization in the city of Schenectady. Good cause eviction has been opted in by our neighbors over in Albany to try to increase housing stabilization for families for our most vulnerable populations. And so I wanted to bring that to the council to give you an opportunity for us to kind of have a focal target change around why this order would not be a good idea for us to do. Any questions on that?
So absolutely, to provide my feedback, I would say, just taking the optics of the room, it's definitely a, I can tell there's a lot of emotion, and it's unfortunate how the conversation, I think, has manifested just in us presenting this one discussion topic to the city, where it seems as though we're putting one side against the other, tenants against landlords. And sincerely, from my experience with getting myself smart on this topic and hearing a lot of the feedback and comments from the rail, and also in the conversations candidly that I've had with people from both sides, definitely I'm still learning myself. But the reason why I support good cause eviction is because of the protections in place for tenants. And I say that within a framework of information that I've received over the last few days in preparation for this conversation. Schenectady predominantly has a higher majority of renters. I think that is something that is not debatable, and we all understand and respect that. The reason why I support this is because of the work that my wife does as a social worker, but also hearing about the resounding impacts of having unstable housing. And as we entertain conversations around this table, talking about the living conditions within the city of Schenectady, housing is absolutely an apparent survival need. And I think it's arguably a necessity to require safe, affordable, adequate housing for individuals. As I look at why I think the core tenets of good cause eviction resonate most with me, it's because of the protections and the legal recourse that it presents to tenants. And I think as we have this conversation at the table, I look forward to hearing where the rest of the council stands. But sincerely, looking at the last information that was compiled from our 2020 to 2024 HUD analysis, just reading from this caption, and I can pass this information around, they identify housing problems as housing cost burdens, severe housing cost burdens, substandard housing, overcrowding, and severe overcrowding. And it highlights that 53.3% of Schenectady renters experience housing problems, and 33.3% experience severe housing problems. And as we've attempted to have discussions at this table about rent stabilization, which was met with an overwhelming resentment from individuals in this room, I think it's important to ask, why are we so opposed to having this conversation that we all can recognize is important? Is housing a luxury or is it a need? And how do we ensure that these protections that are put in place for tenants do not come at the overwhelming expense of landlords? However, this sincerely is a rebalancing of power for tenants, and I'm being explicit in that. I do not think that is a negative sentiment to get around. I look forward to having conversations throughout the week with some of our landlords to better understand their opinions and sentiments around the topic. But sincerely, what I've read, and I ask everyone to actually read the law and not interpret it from secondhand accounts, in my understanding of the law, it provides landlords the ability to still evict people. It still provides landlords the ability to control their properties. However, there are stipulations in place. I'm sure that that is not coming at the overwhelming expense of tenants who, at this point, are living day to day, week to week, month to month, without knowing whether they have long-term tenancy, regardless of how they uphold the standards for that residency, resident or dwelling. So I'm just one comment as of right now, but I always present myself as being objective. But what I've seen so far leads me to be in support of this. Now, whether we pass anything out of this committee, I think, is a long shot, so as the conversation morphs. I just want to remind people that sincerely, we are here to ensure that we empower all members of our community. But I do think it is important to put a heightened emphasis on our tenants, with renters being a majority in the city's factory. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
So definitely, I'm looking forward to hearing feedback from other council members. But I think as we talk about what good cause eviction is, it's equally important to talk about what it's not. And so again, to Mr. Williams for reading the legislation, this is not a law saying that you cannot evict people from your property if they're there and you're not paying to stay there. You know, I would not support anything knowing that the landlord has an obligation to take care of the property, pay for his property. I wouldn't support anything that would allow someone to stay on your property without making payments, or someone that's damaging your property, or violating your lease. I think that the reality is, I know that the reality is that there are a good amount of our people that live in the city of Schenectady. I think it's 7,590 victims since March of 2020. It's like, a lot of people are being asked to leave their homes for reasons that are not good reasons. And this is uprooting families. This, I remember during the pandemic, and I didn't make the connection until I started doing a little bit of research here, working in the school district, working with families who are housing insecure during the pandemic. Those are the people that were the most vulnerable. Those are the people who were contracting COVID at a much higher rate than counterparts. And so as well as not just the... So not only was impacting our most vulnerable population in that way, also realizing, you know, we were talking earlier about the meals that were getting delivered to people. A lot of the people who were in the greatest of need to get some of those food and meals delivered to them were living in really substandard housing, that was unsafe housing, that left them not only, you know, susceptible to COVID-19 due to people being evicted, and the families having to kind of double up and share spaces in really close quarters. There are also, you know, really the people that are living in housing conditions that are just unsafe, and that is just compiling upon one another. So there's a lot of different reasons why I support good cause eviction, and I do so pretty explicitly. And after really researching the issue and recognizing that, there are some pretty key misunderstandings, if you will, that are being communicated out to the public around this. And I would love to, you know, use today as a way to kind of just debunk some of those things. So again, if someone is not paying their rent, they can be evicted. If somebody's damaging your property, they can be evicted. But if someone is breaking your lease, they can be evicted. So again, this is not something that we're just, you know, allowing people to stay in someone's property without paying their rent. However, all of our rights come with a community responsibility and ownership of the property, different than ownership of your vehicle or ownership of, you know, anything that you own. There are community responsibilities that come with that ownership. You can't just operate your vehicle any way you see fit, because there's lives of other people at risk. You can't opt, you know, you own your garbage. We talk a lot about the garbage. We can't just, it's my garbage, I own it. I can just put it out any day I want. It's mine. I can just put it out. Well, it is technically your garbage. You do own it. You can't, you know, you, it technically could do that. However, you know, the city doesn't allow you to. So because we understand how one person's actions, even over things that they own, interact and impact the larger community. So that's why I support good cause eviction. And hopefully, I'll be able to hear from all the council members on what their ideas or thoughts are on this. So I open the floor. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Sorry. So I've also been doing some research, and it's such, you know, it's not something that's easily understood. I guess I'm coming down against good cause eviction. I think that we have to be protecting our tenants as well as our landlords. I think one of the things is that I worry that we'll have some landlords who might want to be, who are fearful of this passing, who might rush to try to sell their properties, maybe for less than what their properties are worth. I think it would have implications for our tax base overall if that was to happen. I know that SCAP, the Schenectady Community Action Program, is also not in favor of good cause eviction. They feel that, I think, that landlords need ways to sort of reasonably help the tenants. First of all, I want to back up and say that, again, when I think about our landlords, for the most part, I think that here in Schenectady, a lot of our landlords are not folks that, you know, are carrying huge amounts of properties with them. I think most of them are probably blue-collar immigrant population. And I think that this would, you know, this would really affect them. Not being able to raise the rent more than 5%, for example, might not be able to cover some of the costs, as the cost of living has increased, you know, more than that. I think that would be bad for the landlords in that sense as well. I think SCAP seems to be against good cause eviction, because they want to make sure that the folks that are living in bad conditions don't have to live in bad conditions for a really long, sustainable period of time. We have to remember that our court system here has, I think, three justices that would be handling these cases. There's only certain days of the month that they handle the cases. So it could be that because every case would have to get adjudicated through the court system, we might find that people are, you know, that the landlords are needing to go without rent for eight, nine, 10 months, because the court system is going to get so backed up trying to adjudicate every single case, as opposed to cases that just have to do with, you know, bedbugs or some sort of living condition that would exist. Trying to look at all of my notes here. Those are the primary, the primary reasons. I mean, I think the tax base is really something that we have a responsibility as city council to really be paying attention to. We know that we might be facing a budget again going into the 2026 budget year that's going to be a tough one for us. So I think that if we have things that are going to negatively affect the tax base, that that's not a good idea. That's pretty much everything that I have been thinking about and reading about. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, so quickly, as far as just to trust some of the things you said, as far as people being rushed to sell, like landlords being rushed to sell their property, once again, a landlord who is rushing to sell the property because the city is saying that you must provide a certain standard of living for people who live in your property, I don't think that that's the type of landlord who I would be necessarily concerned about leaving the city. Honestly, if people are living in subprime conditions, you do have an obligation to address that. And I think that it's very low, I think it's a very low expectation to have for a landlord to make sure that people, tenants that are living in their house are living in conditions that are minimally safe. So as far as the court system goes, I don't see how to back up the court system. I think right now, anytime you're trying to evict a tenant, you need to take them to court anyway. Like, that's the process. If I think about, and I don't have the numbers for Albany right in front of me, but Albany, I believe it was Albany, the Leagues House, it has a very, the court system had, I think, was 30% less people that these cases were going to court since enacted. So to your point, I think it does pretty much the opposite of that, but that is definitely something, I can understand why that would be a concern, but I think the discussion does opposite of that.
So definitely, I wanted to make sure, and I think it's been framed well, that this is not against the landlords, but it is putting in place some protections for tenants. You know, I think one of the reasons that this came about is because of the level of homelessness and also the high rent that we have in our community at this point in time. And it went over the reasons for evictions. I've heard from landlords as well as tenants about their positioning on it. And just paraphrasing, mostly what I hear from landlords is that they feel like we are basically deciding for them how much the rent they can charge and how they cannot put people out. And that is not the case. You still have reasonable ways to evict people, I won't call it putting them out, to evict people. For nonpaying the rent is what occurred from a lot of landlords, that people aren't paying their rent. Well, good cause eviction, if you're not paying your rent, you still get evicted. It doesn't matter. That's not one you can't say, I want to stay and I'm not going to pay my rent. And I understand that also from a lot of landlords, that did happen during COVID. So that is put away from, that's no longer a concern. And after this law was passed, I do believe that there should be limitation on rent increases. I have to say that. I've heard of some of the rents that people are paying in some of the neighborhoods, and it's really well beyond what the median income is of the city of Schenectady. And so we have to do something so that people are able to live. I look at it like this. If you're a landlord and you want to have a steady tenant, if your rent is at a place where they can afford it, and they're not having to get evicted every so often, then we should, if the rent is a place where you can keep your tenant continuously, and I would think as a landlord, and I've spoken to landlords who agree, that I want to have a tenant that stays with me for months, if not years. And so therefore, you're not, landlords lose money, because they have to, if they're evicting people, that means your property's not rented. That means that then if there's damage to your property, then your property has to be fixed up. So you're still losing money. So in the landlords I've been speaking with, it's like, we would love to have landlords, we would love to have tenants who are long-term. And keeping the rent at a reasonable amount would definitely do that. And landlord right now is, as I said, is the balance of power between the landlords and the tenant. And just want to state for me personally, and I would say probably for all the city council, we're not against landlords, but we are trying to find a way that tenants can stay in their homes, who are following all of the rules, who are not creating nuisances, who, and that landlords are also then repairing their, doing reasonable repairs to their property. So in looking and doing the research that I did, I saw that sometimes, Mr. Corporation Council, that small landlords are defined a certain way. In New York City, they're defined one way, which would not be the same here. So my question actually is for you, and if we were considering this, would we be in a position of deciding what a small landlord would look like?
Right. I mean, I don't present any threat. I mean, the law says 10 units or less across the state of New York. Cities such as Albany, that you mentioned earlier, is one in the state, one or less. So the statute says 10 or less across New York State. Localities have been stating one or no more than one unit anywhere in the state of New York. So there's two things that, to opting into this legislation, one is how many, you know, what's the definition of small landlord, the state definition, 10 or less, or anywhere in between one or 10. And then the fair market, the FMR percentage, which is also at the discretion of locality. The FMR is the fair market rent, 245. 245 is the state rate, 245% of the rent, which in this county, according, I'm getting this information from the New York State Department of Housing and Community renewal, April, April of this year's report, page, the FMR 245 for, let's say, a one-bedroom, this is picking up the figure, one bedroom is 245, is $3,014. A four-bedroom, it goes up to $4,829.
But that is the county and not the city, because...
Yeah, it's done at the county level.
So, I mean, that changes the numbers tremendously.
And that's the numbers that we go by.
So if we're, as we enter this discussion, we need to look within the city, because the county, we have parts of our county that are more wealthy than, and more affluent than the city of Schenectady. So is there a way for us to really determine that or get that from either, from the Comptroller's Office or from the New York State Attorney General's Office, who also has, you know, given the information on what good cause eviction looks like? Because I think it's important that we look, if we're talking about the city, that we look at the city numbers.
Understood. But the fair market rate as defined as the Department of Community Estate Agency here, fair market rent is determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by county. by county. So it's, it's by county.
So there's no way to get the city information?
I don't know if, but I'm just saying the fair market rate is 245. Now, if you want to go above 245 of fair market rate, for example, the city of Albany is at 345, the city of Rochester is at 245, which is what is set in the statute. That's up to what you all need, you know, determine. So, but the fallback is fair market rate by the, by counties.
Well, I, I would like to look into and have us look into what it is for the city. It just makes sense that we can't have this, this larger conversation about the county when we're really only, and our only jurisdiction is within the city.
I believe the city of Albany did, based on the city too. I would give that they, I, I believe that's something like that. Sweet.
Yeah, so I'd say just to make sure we're clear about the community that we're advocating for, of course, talking specifically about renters, we're talking about a median household income of $44,000, which is not a lot of big money. And, and one of the points I wanted to just respond to Ms. Patrick, understanding that our landlords might reflect a certain demographic not comparable to other municipalities that have enacted this, in addition to the small land, the small landlord definition, owner occupied dwellings are exempt as well. So there are considerations for different conditions, but sincerely just posing a rhetorical question, we often talk in extremes. So if you have a renter who is promoting illegal activity or is not paying their, their, their rent or disregarding their lease now and in good cause eviction standards, they can be evicted. That is something that exists right now today. But on the opposite, if you have a landlord that is openly not maintaining their property at the, the appropriate conditions, and you have a tenant who uses the mechanism in place today to highlight that egregious behavior, they are susceptible to retaliation or retribution for, for, for saying and advocating for the lifestyle and wellbeing of themselves and oftentimes other generations within their household. And if we're continuing to highlight just who this, this community or who this most inadvertently impacts, I do not know the cost of having to remove and, and refine housing within the city's country, but providing a tenant 30, 60, 90 days, it is difficult to impossible. So again, I think this is rebalancing the power in a way that is appropriately done. And again, there are considerations for, for both sides, all aspects, but if we are trying to improve and ensure that there is adequate housing, I think from the conversation that we've been having, the majority of our tenants in the city's country would not rise to alarming or, or having to force landlords to require eviction access. This is how do we ensure that these protections exist for everyone?
Mr. Mudd. Yeah, thank you. As we discuss this option here, we should be mindful of COVID-19. There are some landlords who have never recovered from COVID-19. Some of them are thousands of dollars here also, and why, you know, some people took advantage of the COVID-19 situation. I'm not, I'm not against tenants, I'm not against landlord, but there are good tenants, there are bad tenants, there are good landlords, there are bad landlords. So let's be mindful of what we do here in terms of the economic impact that's going to happen in the city. We hate to see what happened during COVID when people were not paying, landlords were out of money, we foreclosed on a many of the properties and, and we're going to have them back and we're going to put them on the market and we're going to sell them in a couple of months here. Let's be mindful of that. What we need to do is also make sure to drive that educational component, so educate tenants, educate landlord, what their needs are, what their responsibility on both sides are in terms of tenant and landlord, so they work together. We have an agency like SCAP who is saying that they're not, they're against opting in this, for this option. There are a lot of reasons why they, they might want to do that, but we need to find out why, you know, get to the bottom of why they want to do it because they have forced our knowledge of dealing with this situation every day, and they are putting people in, in houses. So those are things that we need to address. And in terms of rental fees going up, yes, it's happening across the city. Why? Because we have been raising taxes, we have been raising waters, sewage, garbage. So those costs eventually, as we mentioned, will trickle down to the tenant. And this is what we, we're seeing here. So we need to address all of that as we move forward. Let us not, let's be careful of not putting tenants against landlord or landlords against tenant. Let's make sure whatever we're doing here works best for our city. And as we try on the economic impact and ensure that we have adequate housing for our tenant, yes, we're having, almost all the apartments that are rented are inspected by code enforcement or rental certificate. So they are a standard, and I know for fact that there is a, there's an aggressive approach from, approach from code enforcement to make sure that these apartments are code compliance before they're rented. And if they're not, if they're rented without certificate, rental certificates, they cannot evict, it's my understanding that you can't do eviction until you have a rental certificate. So there, there is a play there that we have to be careful what we're doing. Yes, the apartment is rented, the apartment is in code compliance, they're renting, let's think about the educational part to make sure that we educate both the landlord and the tenant of how they need to treat others. So that's, that was my thought.
So in terms of SCAP, I've only heard here that SCAP's against it. I personally would like to see, because that's just, what SCAP has to say about it and their reasons that they, they are against it. I would love to have seen that, you know, if that was information that could have been before us tonight, but I'd like to see that. And in terms of COVID, the COVID was, I mean, I agree with people being put out because they didn't pay their rent. That's just, you know, you should, you should pay your rent. If you have the ability to pay your rent, you should pay your rent. So I don't think COVID is now, and I know that people were impacted by COVID. So this is not that. And so when people now, if you don't pay your rent, you get to, you go to court, you get evicted if you are damaging people's properties. I talked, spoke with a landlord as recent as early this morning. If you're damaging property, you get, you know, they put you out. If you're doing something illegal in their property, you can, you know, you can get evicted. So there are things in place that also protect landlords. This is just not only about making sure that tenants are treated fairly. There are parts of this are in place. And let me also say, I don't know if everyone that's in this room, whichever side of it that you're on, if you haven't read the legislation, if you haven't read the law, I suggest that you do that, and it may, it may change your positioning on things. But I always encourage people that if, you know, there's a subject that you're passionate about one way or the other, that you really make sure that what you're, what you, your understanding of it is your understanding of it, not another person's understanding or interpretation of it. So I, I agree that we definitely need to, as we're moving forward, consider both the landlord and the tenants, but we definitely, we've talked about this a lot, about the increase of, of increase of rents. And so I guess in that case, when we're doing our budget, we'll be talking about the other increases that we do that will be impacting tenants and then therefore, excuse me, impacting landlords and therefore trickling down to tenants.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that in the, in the legislation, as it is right now, as it is right now, a landlord increasing the rent based on taxes and fees from the city is allowable. So again, I would just encourage people to look at the legislation and then maybe point out, if you're a landlord and you're reading it from that perspective, go through the legislation and maybe identify something that, that's within the legislation that goes against a practice that you're having now. And I would, and I would make the probably unsafe assumption that if you were to do that, you'd recognize that the legislation as it, at the level of the tax right now is supporting you being a, a good landlord and supplying people with a, a safe, reasonable place to live. I, I, I would imagine that there's some people who might be speaking against this right now, but if they looked at their practices, and their practices might align with the legislation as it stands right now. So again, I would just encourage people to do so.
Mr. Williams.
As we're in a point of clarification to Mr. Mudd and Baron, I find that you're often an opponent of code enforcement, so I imagine if Mr. Prince is listening, hearing it accurately given to his organization would be really well received. Can you just clarify, you're saying you are confident, and I would ask how confident, in code enforcement's abilities to adequately make it around the entire city to ensure that every rental property is up to appropriate standards?
Let, let me correct you on that. I'm not against code enforcement. I'm against the way how they conduct business. Okay? So let me clarify that to you. I'm not against code enforcement. I'm very supportive of the program, but I would like to see a, a level playing field when they go there to do inspection and to apply the code evenly. And when they don't do that, I have a problem with that. And I have come, they're, they're doing good work, no doubt about it, but they have some officers who does not apply the code evenly. And I expect them when they go to do their rental inspection, which is a must in order to rent an apartment, that they will make sure that the apartment is in code compliance before they issue the rental certificate and to proceed with that. Because most of the agency, like I would say Section 8 or DSS will require rental certificate, and the court require rental certificate now in terms of before they do make sure.
So just, just further, you were saying from your opinion, you feel that that is done to optimize standards throughout the entire city, just yes or no?
Let's not go down in this, brother, okay? We're here to discuss accordingly, and I, when I discuss it, it's me here, okay? Let's, 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 let's be sensitive here, so.
Excuse me.
Pardon me, so.
No audience, no audience participation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just the stat, you know, for the statute under, under what we're talking about, it, it does refer to the county, shall refer to the county. So the benchmark of, you know, of 245 or the market rate is in the statute as the county. So that's the, the benchmark that you have to be aware of. That's the measuring point that's in the statute and that the Division of Community and Housing Renewal uses when they publish their reports. If the council, you know, the two things, as I indicated before, that the council has, has discretion in, in opting into this law is one, the percentage of fair market value, the statute says 245, and I gave you the figures there, and the, how to define the, the small landlord under the, under that. This has to be done by local law, which is a lot more complicated and, you know, drawn out process than ordinance and definitely a resolution. There's got to be, you know, at least one public hearing, municipal home rule law, Section 20, because we have a chief executive officer as the mayor, as the mayor, allows him to have a public hearing before he reviews the ordinance under certain timelines. The council can certainly always call for a public hearing on its own, but the direct, the draft of the legislation opting in would, would need to have, and the council would have to come to an agreement, or the committee would have to come to an agreement, whether it wants, how it defines small landlord and whether it wishes to go above the FMR of 245% as is indicated by the statute. So I just want to, it's, it's a local law process, so there's at least one public hearing before the chief executive, if the council wants to have its own and it can. And there's certain time, timeframes involved, and because of the next committee cycle, I don't think we have our next committee cycle until early July. So I'm just throwing logistics out there, you know, for you to consider. Appreciate that. Mr. Turner, did you have any?
Everybody's, yeah. Okay. So just a few things. So participating in neighborhood association meetings for years, going to almost every SLIC meeting for years, so I do hear the, the signs of both. I do want to say that, you know, small landlords should be, are small businesses. A lot of them are there because this is additional rental, additional income to their job that they have, or they're actually creating some generational wealth for their families moving into other generations. These individuals, these landlords, you know, 10 units and under are, are there because it's their livelihood. So we want to make sure that they're able to have a small business in the city as well as anyone else having a small business in the city. Just a few things, I, I've read the law, I've been hearing about the law for many years. Starts down in, in the city with 10 units and over, but here, but they're also considering as a, here is seasonal rentals. I don't know if any of you guys have read that as far as what they're considering small, small businesses, okay? Seasonal rentals, any type of, anything really coming in as far as, you know, people renting out their homes, all right? So those things all come into effect. I think this CURA, which is Center for Urban and Regional Affairs, they do important research as far as economic analysis on what, what, what it's going to do to our economy. And we've spent how many years growing our economy, building, building a Schenectady that we're all proud of. So those are all things that come into play that we really need to be, we need to be aware of. I will agree with Mr. Mudd and Baron, you know, you know, we need to raise taxes, and we said right along that this would trickle down to the tenants, each and every one of us heard that here. But it's, it's not fair that the landlord should have to lose money owning a rental property, and that's what's happening to a lot of them. As far as our tax base, if these properties are, can't be maintained, they lose value, which goes against our, it could shrink the property values and reduce the overall tax revenues to our city, and we don't want that. You know, I hear, you know, a lot of landlords might want to sell their properties right away, opening up the door for individuals, you know, larger corporations or businesses to come in, absentee landlords from wherever, out of state, downstate, upstate, and not being able to, with, who don't have the same values that most of our small landlords here in the city do, who really care about the individuals that they're renting to, making the proper repairs and maintenance on these buildings. So again, I mean, I'm definitely looking at the overall, you know, and I think all of us struggle to pay taxes, to buy food, you know, to pay rent, to make a car payment, you know, things, things are, things are not good. So at this point, again, I, I'd be in favor of our small landlords who are small business owners trying to promote a, a good thing. And another thing I'd like to say is, small property owners are actually part of the solution for fair and equitable housing. And if you think about it, you know, you've got a two-family, three-family, you're, you're actually taking people in who need to be taken in from the city and, and, and living in, in good conditions. So they're part of the solution, and that's about the language. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Want to agree with a lot of what you said. I believe that, that you're correct as far as small landlords and the, and how they contribute to our local economy. I guess where my question is, it would be what in the legislation would make you, brought the point around, the properties not being maintained. The spirit of the legislation is actually taking sure that properties are maintained. So I'm wondering what part of the legislation would encourage properties to be not maintained? Like what, like where do you see that, where are you making that connection at?
Well, I think if, if, you know, landlords decide, you know, they can't, they can't raise the rent, you know, to something that they want, they have to pay the taxes, they can't afford improvements to the, they can't afford to make improvements to the property, and then they sell the property. So the individuals coming in are just not going to make the repairs, and that's going to make for the individual tenants who are moving in and still living there, because also through this, this legislation is leases, there always has to be a lease now, so the, the tenant always maintains a lease. And now the, the new landlord's not going to do anything, and now the tenant's stuck in a, a situation where, where things are unsafe for them. So it, there, there, it's just a whole, yeah. It's a lot of discussion and a lot of review and a lot of analysis.
Sure. I guess, I just like to add that, that's not how the legislation works. So, but I, so there's, there's been, of good concerns have been raised at the table. I want to be contentious about considering those things, and I think we all should, but I really want to make the distinction between what we say versus what we mean, and what the legislation, how I understand it, is ensuring that, that people have a place to live, a safe place to live. There's exemptions available for small landlords based on what a corporation council was talking about, that would be the burden of the council, which I think is something that we, that we definitely have to consider. But I, but when we get into scenarios around like landlords not being able to maintain their property and things like that, there's nothing. their property and things like that, there's nothing in the legislation that prohibits that from happening, in fact, and encourages that to happen. When we talk about neighborhood stabilization, one of the things that people think about the most when they purchase a home or property someplace is the school district. And I don't know if you guys know, but our, you know, our school district has been working to increase our graduation rate. But if you look at a student that is, stays as Schenectady City School District from K to twelve, do you know that the graduation rate is over something like ninety-five percent? So what that is, what that data point will tell you is that when you have families that are not in transit, you know, that are not transient families, that are not, you know, kind of suffering from subpar living conditions, are not able to have stable housing, not only does it provide those neighborhood stabilization for that particular family, but it also makes our city a more desirable place for people to purchase a home, which therefore will benefit the local economy. So that's something that we have to acknowledge as well.
I was just going to point a clarification. The legislation as it currently written, it allows for significant improvements. So I think what you're probably highlighting is that needs to be justifiable. You can't just say tomorrow I'm raising my rent by a hundred dollars. It just ensures that there are considerations in place to how and why are you doing that? And again, that is to empower tenants so that they are just, there's a less account for rent or price gouging. But sincerely, and I mean this with all consideration, I think everyone, well, I know everyone at this table has a certain amount of power or influence, and I would really want to hear from the mayor in this regard. Sincerely, Schenectady, we're only as good as our planning and understanding the long-term strategic focus of the city, I think helps us ensure that our actions remain in tune with your vision and authority for the city.
Thank you. I would only ask that the council be consistent that Mr. Muda Baron's representation, that we have a rental certificate program in place. It's generally recognized, fairly comprehensive program that ensures safe and decent housing. We have tried for the last three years to get state-enabling legislation, home rule legislation, to make the eviction process contingent upon participation in the rental certificate program. That legislation did not pass until last week. So it's passed the Senate and the Assembly, and will go forward to the governor now. And would ask, assuming the council does a resolution in support of that, I intend to advocate the governor's office to ask for her to sign that. But that option is actually going to be more restrictive and more results-oriented than some of the things that you're considering. That is a two-family house. I don't care if it's owned by one person or whatever. If it doesn't meet the rental certificate program criteria and have a valid thing, they cannot go into small claims courts and start an eviction proceeding. And I would ask, and we've tried that for three years, that legislation is going forward now, we have the option to actually put it in place and incorporate it in the overall delivery of housing within the city. And to let that be kind of the cornerstone of what we're doing going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you as far as that legislation. And I believe that that legislation is really in line with the legislation that we're discussing here today. So I don't believe that has to be an either-or situation, but it should be a yes-and situation. I would also speak to the fact around like, we're using the term kind of returning a level of power to tenants. Quite honestly, I don't, I don't see it that way. I don't see that it's providing any power as much as it's protection. I think the distinction is important because as we talk about shifting power, that's something that we can shift from a landlord, shift to a tenant. Really what we're saying is protection is the right term. I would frame it as because it's protecting people's livelihood. And that's a very different thing than saying I'm giving you power over a person that owns this property, but saying I'm going to protect you and your livelihood, I think is more in line with, it was more in spirit of the legislation as it's written right now. And again, you have people that will speak against this, and I'm willing to hear their thoughts and definitely willing to consider the points of views. But I would, again, just before you speak against it, if you are a landlord, look at the properties that you own, look at how you engage with your tenants currently. And if your practices are outside of some of the things that are written in this legislation, well, then I think that there's some, maybe some considerations that you need to make yourself. But I would imagine, to the mayor's point, that we are setting a standard here in the city of Schenectady, that most of you are already meeting, if not exceeding. But there are people that are not. So we cannot afford to paint landlords with a broad brush and say every landlord presents like this and provides this level of quality housing to people, because all you have to do is take a walk the street and you'll know that that's not true.
Mr. Williams. So I'd say in my final comments, I would just ask that, I think as a country, we've lost the ability to have debates without being so hardly positioned or unwavering or unmoving. So I look forward to having conversations with individuals from both sides of this conversation, whether they're in this room. And I just ask that we challenge ourselves to leave into different perspectives and also welcome differences in opinions. And I think that is something that I pride our city on being able to do, and I look forward to practicing that, not just with this topic, but many others throughout the rest of my career.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
So, it does not appear we're going to be moving forward with a, with a hook this evening. So I think a lot has been said, and everyone's been here and here, and I do want us to speak to the fact that there was some mention made about investors. We already have a lot of people who live outside our city who are invested and own property. So I don't see this as changing that dynamic. And in terms of, and I don't want the fear mongering to be out there that, like, if we, if we move this forward, then all of a sudden we're just going to have all these vacant properties. I think that's a, we don't want to, you know, we really want to talk in specifics, and I think that's just a level of fear mongering that we really don't want to do, that people are going to rush to sell their properties. And we should continue to have this conversation. And yes, Mayor, that legislation did pass, and I must say thank you to the clerk's office because for three years straight they worked on it, and Ms. Michael followed up on that continually, so we finally were able to get that through. So I think we need to take into consideration this new legislation and also, when I talk about new legislation that's coming forward, I'm talking about that has to do with rental certificates, and also take into consideration what we're talking about here with the Good Cause Eviction Law, and have that conversation and make it, and come to a decision of how we want to move forward. But that would mean that all council members would also, you know, we just look at all of this, we can do it collectively, individually, but we just definitely need to have that conversation and where we're going to finally end up on this. I think a lot of positive things have been said here today, and that we have an opportunity to make a difference in the lives of our tenants as well as our landlords. And so Mr. Farley has brought this forward, so I'm going to have to ask, I'm going to ask you how you would like to move forward. Those are my thoughts.
Sure, sure. Thank you, thank you, Matt President. So what I, how I would like to move forward is, I wanted to bring this up as a discussion piece today. I know that due to the fact that this is somewhat emotionally charged, and there is a lot of information and a lot of misinformation floating out there, I want to give all my colleagues the opportunity to kind of delve deep into the legislation as it currently stands, talk with people of the city, and then come back to the table. I will be bringing this back to the table. At that point, I will be bringing it back as an item to vote and trying to vote it out of, vote it out of committee at that time. I also just want to highlight the fact that this is something that has been in process for years and years. And at the state level, there were major concessions that were given in order to get this to a place where it's passable. So this isn't something that came from kind of, you know, just one side of the aisle and people just said, okay, there's something going. There was a lot of concessions and negotiations to get this to a place where it was passable at the state level. So those considerations have been made, and I, you know, we will continue to make those at our local level. So with that, I'll be bringing it back, I'm hoping for a vote next cycle. So that I guess I will accept a motion to adjourn government operation. So.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Excuse me, the meeting's not over, so we'd ask you to finish your conversation in the hallway. Yes, would you tell, yes.
Carl, you can close the door as long as it's not locked.
Are you leaving, Mr. Charles?
Oh, I was going to.
I'm sorry? Okay, I'd like to call the Board of City Development Planning. We have nine items on the agenda. The first one is the award bid and contract for the Franklin Street cycle track to harbor construction, Mr. Wallen. Close it all the way, Derek, Derek, why can't you close? Thank you.
All right, what we have in front of us is the award bid and contract to car construction for Franklin Street cycle track. This is a federally project that's been designed and developed for a couple of years. It continues the expansion of the Central Park Vale Trail connector from Vale Park down Franklin Street to Clinton Street right behind us. It is a separate cycle track, which means that it'll be a separated area for bicycles only, separate from pedestrians, separate from vehicles. Kind of unique in the city, I think it would be the only one at the time. And I think even when Craig Street's done, this will actually be a little bit different than that because it'll be completely separated by urban area. And if you know Franklin Street, Franklin Street is quite wide, it's two-block road essentially, that's two-way, so we have some area there to use. There will be no parking, there is no parking allowed currently on the Doubletree side, so that will remain. And then the island will get a little narrower as you get down to the next block where the parking lot is for the school district and church. It will have parking on both sides right now. This is a federal project, so it's ninety-five percent reimbursement to the city. The local share is paid for with our chip funding.
How many of you have funding for that?
Chip funding is approved in the state budget, so we do have that.
Are there any questions? Mr. Williams? Oops, sorry.
We've been hearing a lot of comments around the likability of the city's facilities, so I imagine there's going to be a lot of residents there with this. Can you just talk around how this is incorporated into projects if this people like size? Because you have said that there is a lot of considerations that come into place to include, or to include bike lanes.
Sure, so this is a specific focus of a project because our, our primary focus in the city is expanding the Central Park Vale Trail connector. So on one end of it, which is the Vale end, we have this project, which is going to bring it to Clinton Street. The next step is going to be working with the Green Market on how we are going to get it down the last block of Franklin Street, then in front of City Hall, to where it actually connects to J and Union, which is the Empire State Trail. That's an on-road portion, but it's still the Empire State Trail. At the same time, you are, we are working on a design for federally project on the opposite end of the park, which is going to go from the Central Park Environmental Education, we're spending the Environmental Education Center, the former casino building, all the way to State Street down Fair Avenue. So those are essentially the two bookends of it. And then, once we have those two, those are off-road trail, that's really what the focus is provided. So the goal is going to be that someone can go from State Street and Fair all the way on a essentially dedicated path all the way to the Empire State Trail, J and Union. So this project gets us closer, that project gets us much closer, then we have that last couple of blocks, which are going to be tough. And that's where working with the farmer market is going to be important because they like to use the area around City Hall essentially like a parking lot. And having a large parking lot surrounding City Hall is good to park trucks and vendors, but it is not advantageous for bicycles and pedestrians. So we have to kind of work together on that one as we go.
Thank you. So first of all, this just sounds cool. First of all, this is, does this for e-bikes as well or just bicycles? Because I know there were.
Yeah, that's more of something that we're going to have to discuss in city legislation, what we want. We've actually discussed it on Craig Street a little bit about posting it for possibly a speed limit, because the Craig Street is going to link Albany Street with the school district, and it's going to be an off, you know, off-road cycle track. And we are having conversations about nervousness of having bicycles or pedestrians in that area and then having people with, even if they're electric, it can still go thirty-five miles an hour on these areas, and that we don't have any way to enforce it. So we are trying to talk about if we can put a speed limit or something on there, because there are different types of e-bikes. There are e-bikes that are meant for exercise with an electric assist, right? So if you wanted to go uphill and it's just too much, it'll help you. And there are e-bikes that are essentially small motorcycles. And those are much, much different than an e-bike that's an electric assist. So it's something that we have to discuss as a city on what we want to do for the regulations back. And I assume that we're going to have all types of vehicles using these areas. This is also going to have a bike signal, which is unique. So you're actually going to go up to the bike path and have your own signal, a little bike on it to tell you when to cross. So I mean, and this is where, and this is where things are going right now with bikes. Craig Street will also have that, but this is a.
Anyone else?
Motion on the table, saw a second.
No, she didn't make a motion, because he had a question. So his question came first. Now we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is just to review the redirection of the portion of Chrysler Avenue from a two-way street to a one-way street from the intersection of Craig and Main Streets. Public hearing must hold on June ninth. We, I think we had four speakers come. And. I think most people weren't favored. So at this time, we need to move it out of committee. So is there, are there any questions, any further discussion on this?
I'm open.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The next item, item number three is a reminder of the weight limit posting on King's Road. There will be a public hearing on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The final items are all property sales, which will be done in the second session. So at this point in time, I've asked for motions for recess.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye, we're recessed.
So I'd like to call the Board of the Claims Committee. We have three items on the agenda tonight, all of which need to be discussed in executive session. So I have the motion to adjourn to the executive session. I was second, and I was favored, aye, we're on the executive session.
Members of the public will have to leave.